Good evening. Welcome to a meeting of the North Penn School District's Board of School Directors, August 15, 2013. Guys, do we have the, uh...okay.
Welcome to the North Penn News Update for August 15, 2013. As the sun sets on the summer of 2013, the district is abuzz in preparation for the new school year in September. As always, the district facility staff is hard at work preparing our 18 schools and grounds for the arrival of staff and students. Floors are scrubbed and waxed, lights are bright, and every nook and cranny across the district has been cleaned for the new school year. Incoming kindergartners and first graders had the opportunity to ride a big yellow school bus for the first time at the Transportation Department's annual K-Day. Here, the kids and their parents become acclimated with a bus, and the bus rules before their first day of school. The North Penn High School pool, fields, turf, track, and gyms are in constant motion as the fall sports teams and the marchy nights prepare for their upcoming seasons. Hundreds of students are practicing hard each day, sometimes even twice a day, as the start of the season is right around the corner. With the first day of school scheduled for Tuesday, September 3rd, there are many things district families will need to know. As announced in mid-April, there will be adjusted arrival and dismissal times for 13 schools for the 2013-14 school year. These changes are listed here and are also listed online at the district's website at npenn.org. These time changes are minimal, however, the positive financial impact on the district over the next few years will be significant. The bus schedule will be posted online on Wednesday, August 21st. Additionally, on Monday, August 19th, a postcard with specific bus information will be mailed to all North Penn students and families. Back-to-school mailings, which include the new school activities calendar, will be delivered to all families during the week of August 23rd. For elementary students, the Teacher Finder will be active, and class assignments will be posted on buildings Thursday, August 22nd, and will be available on the Home Access Center on Monday, August 26th. For all secondary students, class schedules will be available on Home Access Center on Monday, August 26th. In addition, all families will be mailed a letter with information regarding Home Access Center information for the 2013-14 school year. As always, log on to our YouTube channel at youtube.com/NPTV for our programming 24/7, and always check the district's website at npenn.org for all current district information.
Welcome to our regularly-scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we usually start out most action meetings, we're going to start off with recognition and proclamations, and we have some young people here we're going to reward, so why don't you take this?
Yes, Mr. President. We are pleased this evening to recognize our boys' baseball state champions, and if you could come forward, and Mr. Monero, head coach, and the assistant coaches that are present this evening also come forward.
First of all, thanks to the Board of Directors and to the entire North Penn School District, all the personnel at North Penn High School. The amount of support that we received for all these guys and everything we did was absolutely outstanding. There's a lot of work that goes into being successful, and a lot of that happens at the very end of the season. So grateful for all the support, and also for all the support in the community. Obviously, these guys all accomplished a lot of great things, but what people don't know is that Dr. Dietrich also was a lifelong learner through this whole process, because I understand he became an expert in Twitter when he was out at Penn State for our game. So a lot of people benefited from this whole run, so that was great. We're fortunate, we're very fortunate, very happy to be here tonight. Most of our guys were able to make it, and it's a real impressive group, a real impressive group of seniors to begin with, and we're very proud that every senior on our baseball team is going to be starting the next step in their lives in college in a couple weeks. They're going to be attending schools like Mississauga, Bloomsburg, Millersville, Monco, Franklin and Pierce, Binghamton, Penn State, Northampton, Temple, LaSalle. Actually, our, the young man who became our number-one pitcher, Brian Mayer, is going to take a four-year BS-NBA program at LaSalle, where he's going to get his masters and bachelors in four years in accounting. So maybe one of these days he'll be, you know, working with the school district in some way. But a very, very challenging course load for him, he's going to try to do that and play baseball. But I think that that challenge and guys pushing themselves is really indicative of what all of these guys did, and really, I think, sets them up for great accomplishments on and off the field in the future. We have some very impressive underclassmen as well that are very, very highly ranked in their class academically and have a lot of doors that are already beginning to open up for them in terms of their futures in baseball and academics as well. So we're very proud of everything that they've done. In terms of a baseball standpoint, on the field between the lines, they defeated a District One champion, a District Three champion, and a District 11 champion in the state tournament. And to get to the state tournament, went out and had to defeat three very good baseball teams on the road without having an opportunity to lose and still go on. So they won those three games, got into states, and then on June 14th, in a nine-inning affair, very late into the night, did some things that will etch them in North Penn history forever. So we're extremely proud of all of them, and certainly very grateful for all the support that we have all around us to make all that possible.
Very nice.
Before, I guess before we introduce, I do want to very quickly present on behalf of the entire baseball team. To Dr. Dietrich, we have a plaque with all the players and the team picture, and also a hat. You can wear this and pull names as well. We actually do have more of these coming soon, too, so I'll make sure that we can get some to everybody as well.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it very much.
Okay, we have, should we bring him through?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Outfielder Chris Akins, he'll be a senior this season. Third baseman Brad Bertucci was a senior. Outfielder senior Brandon Billetts. The man who threw nine innings in the state championship game, Dylan Borowski. Rising junior Anthony Cameron. Senior Ryan Erskine. Rising junior Colin Healy. Rising junior, or senior, Brandon Hagan. Our junior captain from this past season, Chris Kersey. Senior Brendan King. Rising junior Jared Malone. One of our freshmen that we had on the roster this year, Mason Nato. One of our senior captains, Eddie Possavich. Rising junior Johnny Possavich. Senior David Evan Raymond. Rising senior Bobby Scott. Senior Tyler Smink. Senior-to-be Matt Stella. Our manager and very hard worker behind the scenes, Mike Swanson. Senior Brady West. And a rising junior Zach Ziegler. We also have with us tonight two of our assistant coaches, Coach Pat Brett and Coach John Petrazzani.
Guys, I'm going to give you a chance for the full administration, the full board to congratulate you. Introduce your other coaches.
Yep, we have Coach Pat Brett and Coach John Petrazzani.
John, please join in, too.
Don't be shy, Pat.
Come on, guys. Come on right around, guys.
Pat's very shy, guys.
Congratulations, John. Well done. Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. You know where you're going? Well done. Congratulations. We got a heck of a job. I'll tell you. Congratulations. Great job. We really want to honor you guys. It's really good sportsmanship. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations, Coach. Well done. Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. Well done. Congratulations. You know where you're going? Well done. Congratulations. We got a heck of a job. I'll tell you. Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations. Great job. Great job. It was exciting. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Where are you going? Congratulations. Where are you going? Uh... One of the best baseballers I've ever seen in my life. I'm done. It was unbelievable. I mean, congratulations. I mean, the sportsmanship, everything to play. Oh, it was impressive. Really good second play.
He screams it in television like it's a Tyler Perry show. It was unbelievable. It was unbelievable. Hey, I enjoyed it. I liked it. You can, you can get these and then... These are the kids that were here, and you can get the coaches. Great. That's great. Another round of applause, please. For those of you who are here, this is going to be rebroadcast Friday at 7:30 p.m. on Channel 29 and Comcast and Fios 29, Monday and Tuesday at 12:30 and 7:30, and then again on Wednesday at 12:30. Two-peat, gang. Two-peat. Two-peat. Next year. What Twitter ability? I was driving up to the turnpike because he was tweeting. And we went into the tunnel, and then there was... Dap? I got blackouts. Who's on this command? I didn't hear it. For the hell of it. That would be Carolyn. Carolyn. ECP.
Oh, sure. I'm the only one here. Susan's not here.
I'm going to move forward with the Audience of Citizens. Anybody wishing to speak to the board, please step forward, state your name and address for the Audience of Citizens logbook. All right, let's move forward. Recommend approval of the minutes of the 1,009th action meeting held on June 20, 2013, as well as the minutes from the work session held on August 6, 2013, and the special action minutes from the 1,010th meeting held on August 6, 2013, as circulated. So move. Second motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions about those minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Let's move forward with our committee reports. Let's start with Support Services, and that would be Mr. Schilling.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shapinski. The Support Service Committee has not met since the last board meeting, but we're happy to announce that the school district received a smart equipment incentive in June in the amount of $21,124.12 from PICO for reducing electric energy use at General Nash Elementary School. Most of the incentive came from the installation of two new interior lighting and occupancy sensors. Additional incentives were for exterior LED lighting, and two air-cooled chillers, and seven variable frequency drives for the HVA system. The committee asks for your support for the change orders listed on tonight's agenda, and our next meeting will be held on Monday, August 26, 6:00 p.m. here at the Educational Service Center. Enter report.
Thank you. Any questions to Support Services?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr.
Inglewood. How we doing?
We're doing real well.
They're working 5:30 in the morning. That's what they're doing.
They are working well. They're working late, and they're working weekends, but they're going to make it.
Especially with Mr. Schilling.
I know you can make it, but...
Looking really good. I can tell you that from my own experience. How about Hatfield? Are we, is that this year?
No. That will start next June, after school's end.
Okay, after school, then it starts, right? Because then it's the following year we ship them over to Penfield and the Mods and...
Correct.
That's the plan.
Yeah, we told them, Inglewood, just don't worry about the guy on the next, just hammer him away.
Yeah, that's all right. Yeah. 5:30 in the morning, banging concrete, rolling equipment.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions, Support Services? Okay, let's move forward with ECP. Mrs. Murphy.
Thank you. I'm filling in for Susan Leonard this evening. The August ECP committee meeting was held this past Monday on August 12th. There was one action item on the agenda which was amended Board Policy Number 5110, Student Attendance. This policy was revised to reflect the current practice of accepting either verbal or written notification from the parent regarding a student's absence. In addition, a deadline of three days was established for submitting the verbal or the written excuse for notification. Verbal excuses are recorded when received. In addition, a few information items were presented to the committee. The first of which was a status report regarding the efforts of the advertising revenue campaign. Thus far, 70% of the available calendar ads, V-Crawford Stadium ads, including sponsorship of the media booth, three baseball field ads, two NPHS signs, and one three-year MVP package have been sold. The proceeds from these ads will be approximately $28,000. So it's nice to see how that's progressing from a year ago and see how that's moving along. Another information item was the Attendance Improvement Plan. This plan has been developed by a committee representing different stakeholder groups. One significant charge, change resulting from this plan is that the secondary-level phone call will be placed at 10:00 a.m. regarding students who are absent from school and for whom no notification is received from the parent or guardian. This is already taking place in the elementary schools. Other aspects of the plan include being proactive and really working with parents to ensure students come to school, and increasing communication with parents regarding absenteeism and truancy. The committee also received an update regarding the Comprehensive Literacy Plan. Implementing this plan is the requirement of the Keystone to Opportunity Grant. The foundation of the plan was the state's Comprehensive Literacy Plan. NPSD's Comprehensive Literacy Plan articulates what literacy and learning mean to our district and established literacy instruction in student achievement as a priority. This plan promotes literacy education from birth to grade 12. Guidance counselor staffing at the elementary level was also discussed. Data relative to this topic will be collected and then reviewed at a later meeting. The next ECP meeting will be held Monday, September 12th at 6:30 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of ECP this evening? I'd just like to thank Mrs. Libarowski for her efforts on the alternative revenue. I know it's $28,000. This is, what, four months, five months, six months? About that? So it's just the tip of the iceberg, and hopefully it'll grow as we project. Done a very nice job collecting some money and getting some revenue to us. Thank you. North Penn Education Foundation, Mrs. Murphy, that's you.
Yes, thanks again. The Foundation trustees met yesterday to discuss the upcoming school year. We are very excited about our 12th Annual Golf. On this Monday, August 19th, we have more than 100 golfers coming out to the event and are counting on beautiful weather. A special thanks to all the sponsors who are making this event a success. Tickets are also on sale for our Fall Charity Luncheon, which will be held Saturday, October 5th, at Baco in North Wales. Just $25 gets you a delicious all-you-can-eat sandwich and other delicious food. We are working on scheduling a February luncheon as well. We spent time at yesterday's meeting discussing the Educational Improvement Tax Credit Program and how we can increase the number of donations we get through the state program. Currently, we have two approved programs to which EITC funds could be directed to, and another program is currently being reviewed for approval by the state. Foundation trustees are drafting a development plan that would include EITC funding, but also annual giving, annual campaigns, even fundraising, and more. An update was given on the North Penn Alumni Association, which is now a committee of the Foundation. This is really, I think, an exciting new thing for us. The Association recently held a social at which NPHS alumni attended. The word about the Association seems to be growing, and a Family Fund Day will be held at Freddie Hill Farm on Saturday, September 7th. A special note is the NPHS Class of 65 that is actively fundraising for a scholarship they wish to establish when they celebrate their 53th reunion in two years. Members of that generous class have already donated close to $10,000 to the program. A listing of the grants approved for the school year was distributed to all trustees, and a copy is at your seat tonight. The community can review it at npenn.org/foundation/foundation. Also, an annual report is in the process of being published and will be distributed as well. And this is it, and just think about this. You know, the Foundation has given almost $16,027 grants that will be taking place in the next four months. So this is really great for our district. Other topics at the meeting included the possibility of holding a family foundation-sponsored fund day at one of North Penn's schools for the entire community, and the National School Foundation Association Conference that will be held in Philadelphia in May. Any questions about the Foundation can be directed to Christine Libarowski at the ESC. And I'm thanking her, too, for all the work that she's doing for Monday in the golf outing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions at the North Penn Education Foundation this evening? Finance, Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, our last finance committee meeting was Thursday, August 15th. Along with the normal informational items that were discussed, there were some highlights on those items. EIT projections were about $1.4 million above budget, and that is expected to result in a $600,000 surplus above budget. That's our projection. I have $600,000 more than what we projected that we would have on EIT taxes at the end of the year. But year-to-date, we were $1.4 million above budget, so that's where we are with that. We understand that there were some, it was mentioned that Nutrition Services made some moves that are supposed to be, are expected to help the bottom line. We know we've been struggling in that department as far as making ends meet and meeting the operational expenses there. So some moves were made to sort of improve on that situation. We recommended the monthly budget transfers to be approved. We also, as was mentioned in the introduction to the meeting, that there were transportation initiatives discussed, which include more than just a belt, change schedules, and there's people looking at cost comparisons to see what the future's going to hold for us in the Transportation Department, or make some recommendations about how to move forward in the Transportation Department to run that department a little bit more effectively and efficiently. We recommended the approval of the contracts that were approved at the last special action meeting, so we did that. There are some activities in the reverse appeal arena, and there are three properties that Keystone Realty is looking to reverse appeal. Our next meeting is Monday, August 26th. Take note that it is Monday instead of Thursday. We changed our meeting dates to the last Monday of the month. Well, we were thinking of you.
At 6:30, right?
Yes, 6:30, right. So that's the end of the report.
Thank you. Any questions of Finance? And Mr. Sullivan tonight. We have no Safe Schools report. Mr. O'Donnell's not here, but let's move forward with Personnel. Mr. Kerr.
Personnel Committee met in executive session August 6, 2013, 5 to 6 p.m. to discuss matters of personnel, negotiations, and potential litigation.
Thank you. North Monco Technical Career Center.
This is a quick one. We have not met since our last meeting here, but I believe we're scheduled for Monday.
Monday.
Monday, May. So I'll report at the next meeting.
Thank you. Next. The Montgomery County Intermediate, Mrs. Murphy.
We don't meet until next Wednesday, so there's no report this evening.
Okay. Public should be aware, the full board met in executive session tonight, August 15th, 2013, from 6:30 p.m. to 7:32 p.m. to discuss matters of personnel and potential litigation. Let's move forward with our Superintendent's Report. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you. I recommend approval of new board policies 5143, School Nutrition Service, Family Fiscal Responsibility, and 3630, which is the tax-exempt bonds, and the amended board policy 6166, which is Internet Responsibility and Acceptable Use Policy, and 5131.2, Use of Personal Electronic Devices Per Item 45-13A through K.
Motion by Mr. Schilling. Second by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Recommend approval of a settlement agreement for student 081513-3, whose name is on file in the office of the Superintendent.
Motion by Mr. Miniscalco, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Recommend approval of a North Penn School District resident tuition-free, 40 school days maximum, for students 081513-1 and 081513-2.
Motion by Mr. Miniscalco, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Recommend approval of DeShel Bartle and Dooley as solicitors, effective July 1st, 2013 through June 2014, at a rate of $135 per hour for general legal and $150 per hour for special education.
So move. Motion by Mr. Schilling. Second by Mr. Miniscalco. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of Susan Kraus as Assistant Secretary of the Board of School Directors for a one-year term, effective July 1st, 2013, through June 30th, 2014, and the establishment of a bond in the amount of $5,000 with a premium to be paid by the school district.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. Miniscalco. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of Don Mangle as a non-member treasurer of the Board of School Directors for a one-year term, effective July 1st, 2013, through June 30th, 2014, and the establishment of a bond in the amount of $5,000 with a premium to be paid by the school district. Compensation for duties assigned by the Director of Business Administration shall not exceed $100 per month.
So move. Motion by Mr. Schilling.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the contract between Brandywine Virtual Academy and the North Penn School District, Per Item 48-13A through F.
Motion by Mr. Miniscalco. Second by Mr. Sullivan. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the waiver of tuition for the International Exchange Students for the 2013-14 school year, as listed.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? Welcome to North Penn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of Change Order 1 for Sergeant Enterprise Incorporated for the Pendale Asbestos Floor Tile Abatement Project at an increased cost of $3,400, as listed per item 49-13.
Motion by Mr. Miniscalco, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of Change Order Number 1 for Wright Flooring Company Incorporated for the Pendale Floor Tile Replacement Project at an increased cost of $11,928, as listed per item 49-13.
Motion by Mr. Miniscalco. Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of Change Order GC6 for ER Steubner Incorporated for the General Nash Renovations Project at an increased cost of $16,985.53, as listed per item 51-13.
Motion by Mr. Miniscalco.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kerr. Who, are we both good?
We tied.
That's fine. Go to Mr. Kerr. Any comments or questions? Are we just wrapping up General Nash now? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district, as listed.
So move. Motion by Mr. Schilling.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions?
Thank you very much.
Very much so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
Recommend approval of bids, per item BA4A through H, as listed.
Motion by Mr. Kerr.